Good evening. My name is Fran Snedeker, and it is my honor as Chair of the Osborne Civic Affairs Committee to welcome you to the League of Women Voters Candidates Forum for the three members of our community who are standing for election to the Rye City Council. This event is a natural follow-up of the work of the Civic Affairs Committee to provide to Osborne residents incentive and knowledge about how to register to vote, information about how to vote, and the issues and the candidates. We are indebted to the League of Women Voters of Rye, Rye City, and Portchester to hold their very important Candidates Forum here at the Osborne for the first time since the COVID pandemic. We are thrilled to welcome so many members of the community who share our determination to learn as much as possible so that we can all make informed decisions about when we go to vote on the 7th of November. So without further ado, I turn the microphone over to Liz Rotfeld, who is the Rye, Rye City, and Portchester Chapter of the League, who will bring us up to date on the many valuable services that the League provides to the community.
Thank you, Francis, and thank you so much for having us here. Again, welcome. Thank you for joining us here at the Osborne for the Rye City Council Candidates Forum. As Francis said, I'm Liz Rotfeld from the Rye, Rye Brook, and Portchester Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Before we begin, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I just want to share a few things about the League of Women Voters. First, the League is nonpartisan. It neither supports nor opposes candidates. Our members are women and men from a wide variety of neighborhoods and political perspectives. And what we share in common is our dedication to encouraging the informed and active participation of people in our government at all levels. Your moderator for this evening is John Hessel, who is Vice President of the New Rochelle Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Without further ado, I shall turn the evening over to Mr. Hessel.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we have three candidates here for the Rye City Council, Mr. Cunningham, Ms. Jensen, Mr. Nathan. We chose some lots here at the beginning to put them in their order of opening statements, then we'll rotate. We have a couple of timekeepers over here. Our timekeepers this evening are Roz Lar and Alex Van der Wateren. They're going to give you a 30-second warning, and then they're going to give you a stop sign. Okay, so our opening statements are two minutes, then the questions from the audience will be two minutes, the questions from the League will be two minutes, the questions from the audience will be a minute and a half. There are no rebuttals. If you need a rebuttal, you use your time in your answer, okay? Audience members, if you want to ask a question, you can raise your hand. One of the League members will come over, give you a card and a pencil. You can write your name on the card and your question. They're going to go over the questions, make sure that they're not duplicate questions, and put them in the proper order, okay? So if you're like that, you can raise your hand, and they'll come right over. And if you think of one in the middle of the forum, then you just raise your hand, you can put the question in during the middle of the forum. Yes. Okay, you have two minutes for the audience questions also. Which I think that's nice. Okay, so everybody turn off your cellphones or silence your cellphones, okay? And no applause until the forum is over, and we're going to get started right now. Is everybody ready? Are you guys ready? Okay, so, Mr. Cunningham, you have your opening statement.
Thank you, John, and thank you to the members of the League of Women Voters for hosting this event tonight. My name is Keith Cunningham. My wife Nicole and I have made Rye our home since 2012 after, thank you, after 25 years in New York City when our kids were entering into the third and fifth grades. We are fortunate to have chosen Rye to raise our family. I want to keep Rye that unique place that drew us here, the incredible spirit of community, the business district, the safe streets, the beautiful neighborhoods, the open spaces, and a place where our family could flourish. I am confident that I will be able to provide the thoughtful stewardship and careful financial management to keep Rye that special place. I received an undergraduate degree from Providence College and an MBA from NYU Stern School of Business. I went on to have a successful career in finance prior to retiring. I've been coaching many of the sports teams my kids have participated in in Rye. I've been serving on the Board of Directors for the Rye Arts Center as we look towards expansion to provide more children with a broader exposure to the arts. I've been an active member of the NYU Langone Medical Center as a member of the Family-Patient Advisory Council, utilizing my extended experience as a patient. Through my work experience, I know what it takes to be an effective leader. If elected, I will do my best for the residents of Rye.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jensen?
Hi, I'm Jamie Jensen. I moved to Rye more than 13 years ago when my kids were a bit older. Sarah was entering ninth grade, she's right here in the audience. Anders, fifth grade. To make the transition easier for them, I started volunteering right away in our schools, then our town park, and numerous other organizations across the city. My career before Rye focused on improving public education, then a consulting practice measuring the effectiveness of nonprofit programs and government policies. So why Rye? Why the City Council for me? I'm running because I know Rye is at its best when the volunteers step up. Yes, we have a great staff, and a Department of Public Works, fire and police departments that go the extra mile. What we forget sometimes is that Rye has 22 committees filled with volunteers. Think the Finance Committee and the Planning Commission and the Traffic and Safety. These volunteers advise our city staff. We also have hundreds of citizens who donate their time, leadership, and dollars to our local nonprofits, schools, civic organizations, and houses of worship. The best thing about this town is our civic pride. As your City Council Representative, I plan to honor Rye's civic pride. I will listen, roll up my sleeves, and get to work. I will take the time to learn the issues, help create workable solutions. I will pay attention to your voices and all of the neighbors. If you elect me, you can expect me to be fiscally prudent, planning for our future, and helping our city staff tackle the challenges we face today. I also want to make sure our town continues to attract future residents, and that means taking care of our public assets: safe and well-maintained streets, parks, the waterfront, recreation spaces, and our business district. Sorry. Rye is an historic place, and I want to be part of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Nathan?
Hi, I'm Josh Nathan, and I'm running for reelection to the Rye City Council. I want to thank the Osborne and the League for putting on this forum, as well as Jamie and Keith for participating, and everyone watching tonight or on replay for taking the time and interest. My family and I have been very fortunate to live in Rye for the last 23 years, and like so many of you, I enjoy volunteering time to our community to ensure that Rye continues to thrive while preserving what drew so many of us here, and that's why I'm running again. I'll bring the hallmarks of my service to Rye to the job for the next term: three terms as President of the Rye Board of Education, as an appointee to the Governor's Storm Planning Committee for Rye, and most recently, my two years as your Councilman. And those hallmarks are fiscal discipline, good governance, and advocacy for all of Rye, and prioritizing flooding and comprehensive planning as we look ahead. That's the end of my prepared remarks, because I spent the afternoon with Keith and Jamie. And we spent the whole afternoon talking about Rye and our passion and our commitment, what we've been hearing on the campaign trail, and how we will work together, because this is an odd election. There's three of us running for three seats, but there are four names on the ballot. My colleague Lori Fontanis is not running for reelection. She has indicated that she's moving to Paris. What a lovely excuse. I thank her for her service. And so when I learned of this, Jamie and I said, "We've got to get to know Keith." I'm so glad we have, because we three will be great together. We have committed that we will work together. We will listen to you, we will listen to each other, we will listen to our colleagues on the council, and we will engage in thoughtful discourse, and we will bring that spirit to everything we do. And so I look forward to answering your questions tonight. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, here's our first question, and this is going to start with you, Ms. Jensen, but it's a question for all of you. What are your priorities for Rye City?
It's easy. Fiscal prudence, transparency, listening to all of you, and dealing with our infrastructure and flooding challenges.
Mr. Nathan?
Well, not really any different from that. Fiscal discipline, and that's something I have a pretty good track record for keeping an eye on and being committed to. When I served as your School Board President, we were keeping the taxes in Rye under the tax cap even though there was no tax cap. I will continue to prioritize flooding. It is the existential crisis for Rye. It is important that we now weave that into comprehensive planning, and that's something I'm committed to, and I know my colleagues on the council are committed to engaging in that discussion as well. And I will continue to promote listening and good governance in all the work that I do for you. I believe that that is the absolutely most important thing that anyone on the council can do. The great thing about the council is it's actually quite easy. We don't have to be that smart, because all of you are, and you'll tell us what you think and what you want us to do, and all we have to do is sort it out if we just take the time to listen and engage in thoughtful discourse, and I know that the three of us will do that. That's how I've always operated, and I look forward to continuing to do that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cunningham?
When I was first involved in discussion regarding becoming a candidate for City Council, the priorities that I was looking at that time were, for the most part, the flooding issue, which is something which is going to continuously be ongoing for probably decades until we get it completely solved, if possible, and fiscal responsibility. However, once I got back involved further in announcing my candidacy and spending a tremendous amount of time at the City Council meetings and observing the way the City Council has been operating over the most recent times, civil discourse has been moved to the top of the list by far. It's a challenging problem, however, I think it's probably of the issues that we have confronting us, probably the easiest one and the one that we can solve the quickest. The three of us have, as Josh announced, that we spent a lot of time talking and seeing where we have common ground, and there are other issues that we probably won't agree on, but what we will agree on is listening to each other and being restrained to civil discourse and in working with Josh Cohen and Julie and, of course, with Phil Henderson, who's been also an integral part of our discussions.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, here's our next question, and this is going to start with you, Mr. Nathan. Name one issue the City Council voted to approve this year, and explain why you agree or disagree with their decision.
Well, we've actually done a tremendous amount of work over the almost two years I've been on the council, and I would say that while we've been maybe noisy and at times fractious in the way we've moved ahead, we've actually agreed on quite a few things. And so I would say that some of the work that we did that I think was very successful had to do with the adjustments to our land use laws. We improved the role of the bar, the Board of Architectural Review. It didn't quite have the authority that we wanted, and I think we had a good understanding of what needed to be adjusted there so that they could do a better job. Their work was struggling because of some legal limitations, and we corrected that. We also made some adjustments with regard to the development of flaglots and steep slopes. Those were very important. In order to manage that balance, we need to balance between the ability to develop and the ability to actually maintain the kind of community that we all know and love. We also took a look at quality of life issues, and we did a lot of good work on rock chipping and leaf blowing. These are difficult issues, because again, we're balancing homeowners' right and need to do certain things on their property with the right to peaceful enjoyment of their neighbors. And so what I'm most proud of is that we made a commitment with all of these items, as well as our tree legislation, and I'm just not getting into that because it was very, that was quite fractious, but we made a commitment with all of these pieces of legislation to look again at them in 14 months from when they were passed, to see how they're doing and whether they're doing what we want. And so that is the most important part of the priorities, is that commitment to revisit the work we've done and making sure that it's serving you.
Thank you, Mr. Nathan.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cunningham?
Could you just repeat the question?
Sure. Name one issue the City Council voted to approve this year, and explain why you agree or disagree with their decision.
I think, as Josh just went through, they've had a tremendous year as far as making some very necessary changes to the laws of Rye. Really, all of them need to be committed for that despite some of the shortfalls that followed through on the way business was conducted. I think the number one for me is the rock chipping law. I think everybody in town has been plagued by endless rock chipping over time, and I don't think there's a single project that's being had right now as a result of restrictions that's been placed on it with anything. Maybe it could be reevaluated again, because it is reasonably tight right now, but I think that was probably the number one for me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jensen?
Hi. Earlier, I didn't say this, but having spent as much time as I have across the street from the park, I want you all to kind of understand that there isn't probably an issue that doesn't come up at the park: cell service, dogs, public-private partnerships, quality of life issues, you name it, it comes up. And so I feel really fortunate that I'm in a position to kind of even engage with Josh and talk about some of the tremendous work that has happened in City Council. But right now, what I really want to talk about are the things that have been hard for us. Yes, the rock chipping happened, and we got it done, but it was really hard for this community. People were angry. It went on for a long time. The tree law this year, no one wants to talk about it, but the reality is, it got passed, but as Josh said, it needs to be revisited. We want to do both things. We want to protect our tree canopy, and we want to make sure we respect people's property rights. It's a really tough conversation to have. So many of these issues are not listing the good things. What it means is we need to unpack how tough these conversations are. So there isn't one law for me. Rather, it's the fact that we got through some of them that have been really difficult over a really long time. I can remember the days when they were saying, "You can't park, the park is not a parking lot." I think that was the line, right? "The park is not a parking lot." The arguments we've had over Playland, the arguments we've had over rock chipping, and "next door." I have memories of calling Richard Slack and being, "Okay, you ready to listen? This is my next door." These are real issues for real community members, and just listing which ones were the right decisions and which ones weren't is not the point. The point is, is talk about how important it is for us to be transparent and to be willing to roll up our sleeves and talk.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Okay, we're going to start with you on this one, Mr. Cunningham. What is your position of where the city is financially, and what would you recommend in terms of spending budget, tax cap, new revenue sources, and other financial projects?
Well, my understanding is that the city is on extremely good footing. We've maintained our AAA credit rating. One issue that we do need to look at right from the beginning in answering this question is far as the tax revenues are concerned. We need to keep in mind that schools take 62% of the tax revenues. Westchester County takes another 20% of the tax revenues. So the city of Rye is left with only 18% of the tax revenues. So we have a very limited amount of funds to put to work in just countless different areas. So as far as where we stand, I think Greg, our city manager, has just been a tremendous hire to come in and oversee the operations of the city. There's been a number of great changes that the city of Rye, that the Rye City Council has put in place to create some additional new revenue, but I think mostly what we need to be doing is continuously monitoring each project and each capital improvement that we have to make sure that our spending is kept in good standing. There's a number of different capital improvement projects that we're embarking on right now between the courthouse, the city hall, the Department of City Works. We have sewer repairs that are ongoing, road surfacing. We've done a tremendous job in managing that over the last few years, and obviously flood mitigation. So it's a matter of bringing oversight by the City Council into this area of our capital improvements and our fiscal responsibility.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Ms. Jensen?
I agree with Keith. Greg Ospreay, once he got his footing, was an amazing addition to, as our city manager. I have gone to so many meetings and have met with Greg privately to sort of look at how he thinks about our capital long-term plans. The Finance Committee, they're sophisticated, they're careful. This is a town of talented residents. That doesn't mean we have much fungible dollars to work with. So when you get the capital investments, right now I think it's at $100 million, we've got almost $85 million of it funded practically through grants and various other ways. You all should feel like we're in a great, a great position right now, and Bill and Josh, thank you. But I do think we need to do a little bit more comprehensive planning. When you're planning for the future in an aging city with the infrastructure demands that we have, it's not just about the flooding mitigation. Why are we choosing the order in which we tackle problems like the replacement of the courthouse, or where we're going to put new recreation fields, or what we're going to do with our pool at the golf course that's going to need to be replaced in several years? There are capital costs coming, and we need to be thoughtful in our conversations about them, and that's why I'm spending so much time in the community now, before I'm on the council, hopefully you'll elect me, to hear from residents, to see what the priorities are having, because comprehensive planning requires community input. It requires hearing from all of you. You're very much a part of this community, and you have years of experience, many of you having lived in homes outside of the Osborne before you got here. And I just think there's nothing more important than making sure we're having those conversations.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nathan?
So I think both Keith and Jamie have made some excellent points. I'll add to that. I have the advantage of having been on the council, so I'll bring that piece to this. One is, we have a very limited amount of discretionary spending, and I think we need to take great care in marshaling that discretionary spending to achieve our goals, and I think if we engage in thoughtful discourse, we could be having constructive conversations on what is the pot of money we have to direct to solve certain problems. And I think what would help that is if we had, as part of financial decisions that we make along the way, we took a look at the budget at the same time. What is the impact? Where are we in our discretionary checking account? That is something we always did at the Board of Ed, and I think that's something that would help us here. We are relying on the good service and smarts of our city manager, and that's terrific, but I think that's something that we could elevate a little bit to the dais as part of the conversation. Again, we have limited discretionary funds, and we have spent them along the way, not always with the checking account matched up alongside the decision. In terms of revenue, we have taken an important step in hiring grant-writing consultants to help us, and that's very helpful, because we are looking at other sources of revenue other than your pocketbooks to pay for things that are beyond the city of Rye's capacity, and particularly around flooding and other things, and Greg and his team are excellent at that. We should continue to support it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, this question is going to start with you, Ms. Jensen. There are ongoing concerns as to road conditions and sidewalk repair. Discuss measures currently being taken or that you feel should be taken to address these issues.
Let's face it, probably the number one concern that everybody expects the City Council to step up for is taking care of our roads and our sidewalks and the basic things that we think garbage pickup and the things that seem boring and maybe not sexy, but in reality, that's what you want to see have happen. There is a paving schedule. You can find it. I walk every day, some four to seven miles in this town. There's probably a street I haven't walked on. I run into Jana all the time. There's progress happening, and yet never enough. I think the sidewalk issues are really important. Yesterday, I was at a backyard barbecue, and I was sitting with a woman who's been 46 years here in Rye, and she told me that she's worried about the speed limit on that curve on Milton Road from nursery over to Oakland Beach, because the kids all have to race down the sidewalk coming from school and going to nursery, and they can't go on the street because there's only one side of the street that has sidewalks, and she's worried about falling. That's an accident waiting to happen. And whether or not there are trees along the sidewalks that are buckling the sidewalks and making it difficult for seniors and children and anyone to not trip, we have to take care of our sidewalks. There's also concerns about kids on bicycles that need to use the sidewalks when pedestrians are using them, because our streets aren't as safe. So we not only have to have a paving schedule, we not only have to be thinking about our stormwater drain systems, but we also need to be thinking about it in concert with safety. And I think they kind of go hand in hand. So while garbage and filling potholes and making sure our streets look good, and we got a plan and a budget for that, we have to talk about it in the context of safety.
Thank you. Mr. Nathan?
Well, it's a very exciting week for sidewalks in Rye, because on Wednesday we'll be reviewing the Forest Avenue sidewalk program and taking steps to advance that project for state review, and then eventually we will have new sidewalks on Forest Avenue, which is something that I remember hearing about when I first moved here. So we have a lot of good systems in place, and so I would say we just need to keep supporting our city staff. There is a paving schedule. We have a city planner who is constantly taking in- We have a city planner who is constantly taking in information about the condition of our sidewalks and our roads. Greg Ostray is very good about being responsive to collecting citizen concerns. I've called him on a number of occasions and said, hey, what do you think about a sidewalk here, or a crosswalk here, or a light here? And he's like, oh, yeah, that's on the list, and we already have this many people brought it up, and so we've actually put the plan in place to start to do that, and we're watching that. So a lot of this is about encouraging public feedback, and we're getting it, and our staff is responsive. So we just, need to just keep supporting that. And, yeah, it's one of the core things that a city government and a city council does, is just make sure that the potholes are filled, the roads are paved, and the sidewalks are safe. And we do, we do meet and talk about that. And it's, it isn't maybe the most exciting meeting to attend, but we actually have a program where we grade how good we want our sidewalk, how, how, how well paved we want our community to be. Do we want it to be perfect like Disney World? Or are we willing to settle for something a little bit less? And where do we stand compared to other communities? And so your voice really matters when we have that discussion, because we're kind of counting on you to tell us what you want.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cunningham?
Just to add on to this, as far as what our city manager has been doing, because obviously, we're having a challenging time working with Con Edison regarding their repairs to the streets. And it's not just, just, just repairs that came up quickly. A lot of these are long-term planned-out repairs. So, so, so the city manager's been integrating the Con Ed schedule into our city schedule and prioritizing what streets get paved. So we're not going to be in a situation of paving a street, and then Con Edison comes in and rips it back up again a short period later. It seems hard to believe that we actually are trying to coordinate that, but they actually are. Another issue regarding safety is concerned. I, I think that it's, it's wonderful that we've, we've put in these electronic speed monitoring sounds, signs that show you how fast you're going. I'm sorry to admit that numerous times I'm driving along and all of a sudden look up and see that I'm driving 41 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone. And it's just controlled my speeding, my, and I have children that have gone through, and I'm quite concerned about my own safety because they live just off Oakland Beach between Boston Post Road and Milton. And it's a windy, curvy road, and people are coming in off the highway down Oakland Beach and going out, non-residents going out to the clubs out at the point. And they're just going quite quickly down there. So I, I think those signs are tremendous as far as slowing people down and making them think about their speed. But also, I don't see any reason why we do have 25 mile an hour speed limits in numerous areas throughout the city. In fact, from Milton out, going out to the park, not Milton, Oakland Beach, going out to the park, it's 25 miles an hour. However, from Milton going to Boston Post Road, it's 30 miles an hour, which is the most critical part of the street. So I, I don't see any reason why we don't go citywide 25 miles an hour in all the streets.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Maybe we'll stop here. Does anybody want to ask a question? If you want to ask a question, raise your hand. We have the wonderful people in the back there. They'll take your questions, and they'll give you a card. Just make sure you write your name on the card. All right, and we're going to move to the next question while they're doing that. This is question number five, and this starts with you, Mr. Nathan. What steps would you take to accelerate the flood mitigation efforts?
Wow. Thanks for making me go first.
It's the luck of the draw.
Well, I've put a lot of time into this, as everyone on the council, and I put time into it before I got on the council, working on the Storm Committee for Rye. And the, and the thing that we need to do now is, we have one of the best engineering firms retained to help us with this. And they've been focused on primarily Blind Brook and sources of flooding north of, of the city, and, you know, coming down through the village and, and through into, into the What we need to do now is, is focus on what we can do within the city's limits. What can we do along Midland, along the Blind Brook, along the Beaver Swamp flood, floodplain up there? What we can do with our building code, the way we manage our sidewalks and roads? Are there changes that we could put in our code as we think about design? A lot of our maps are old. They're not the maps that we created, but they're the maps we work with. So I think the thing that will accelerate it will be a focus on what are the things we here in Rye can do without having to negotiate with parties outside, not having to negotiate with SUNY and other communities? Because those are long, complicated projects, which we shouldn't abandon. We should continue working on, but let's fix it we can here, and that should be the focus now.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cunningham?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. What steps would you take to accelerate the flood mitigation efforts?
I think I've spent some time, but from the outside looking in, and Josh obviously has had the experience working internally. I, I agree 100% with everything that he had to say. I think one thing that I've witnessed, just as an outsider, just recently, the Locust Avenue Bridge, the city was able to secure $5 million in funds, and that's from a federal, state, and county level, in funding it as well as in grants, to secure construction costs on that bridge. Recently, I went over through the last major rainstorm that we had and witnessed what that potentially is going to mean for the downtown of Rye. Because right now, the cul-de-sac underneath the bridge is very constraining, and the water just flows out around it and floods the parking lots behind Ruby's and the other businesses on that side of the, of the downtown area. That's something that we need to continue doing, is getting external funding, alternative funding for these projects. As far as these upstream projects, they're going to be challenging because there's so many other communities that need to work with us on it. So this is one that we were able to work with and make a great accomplishment towards the process.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Jensen?
John, will you repeat the question?
Yes. What steps would you take to accelerate the flood mitigation efforts?
We live at the bottom of a 14-mile watershed. Water has been a problem in this town for as long as so many of the residents that I talked to can remember. We've got, we've had extreme weather, we've had storms, they're coming faster. We beat the 100-year plane, floodplain with Ida. Those drenching storms we had two weeks ago had new residents experiencing new forms of flooding. So, yes, we're doing, we're doing what we can, and I'm going to tell you right now, because I work with so many county and state agencies through my efforts in the healthcare community world, that we can do that. We can work with other municipalities to figure out the upstream, upstream issues. And the money is going to flow more readily from state and federal dollars because we'll work across municipalities, and we should not take our eye off of those possible grant dollars. And at the same time, all of you as community members need to be asking every time a big development project is happening, do we have, are we asking the right questions? Are we making sure we dot every T and cross, dot every I and cross every T? Because there are a lot of development projects that come up, and we don't talk about them in relationship to flood mitigation. Last week, there was three families from Boulder, which is right off of Forest Avenue, who had extreme amounts of water in their basements and down into their garages, and they're not even in the floodplain. There, that's that street that comes, that's directly across from the entrance of the synagogue off of Forest Avenue. Our storm drains need to be updated. We need to be having these conversations as community members, and we need to be willing to lean in and understand that those things need to happen. Drenching rains are a big deal now.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, this question is going to start with you, Mr. Cunningham. This question is a long question. Earlier this year, there was a request for an emergency council meeting to consider a tree removal moratorium in connection with real estate redevelopment. A situation developed where several council members sued the city's Board of Ethics, resulting in legal costs and some delay to the implementation to the ensuing tree ordinance. Procedurally, could this situation have been improved? And in your opinion, did the resulting ordinance strike the right balance between better control of redevelopment and avoidance of both costs and administrative burdens on homeowners conducting routine property maintenance? Would you like me to read that again?
If it gives me a little more time to collect my thoughts, I'm good.
It's about the tree moratorium.
Yeah. I, I've spent a lot of time speaking with numerous people regarding this on, on the council. I've spent a lot of time speaking with Bill Henderson about it, and I've developed some of my own thoughts regarding that process. I think one thing that will keep me out of the fray on this, and that's part of a conversation that we had with, with Josh Nathan regarding how business is done on, on the, and perhaps later he can get a little deeper into it, how business is done on the Board of Education. And it's done in very deliberate steps where there's information gathering. And once people have periods of time to absorb the information, then there's some public discussion. And then maybe weeks or reasonable period of time, then there's votes on the direction that the city council wants to go on the issue. I think we need to evaluate, obviously, there's going to be situations which are highly, highly critical that we act immediately on, and there are going to be some situations that we don't need to act immediately on, and the urgency isn't necessary. Hopefully, we don't come across any situations ever which we have to have an immediate vote on, an emergency meeting called. I don't know if we will. I don't know if we have much in the past. But I think we need to take a, a slower process and a more transparent process in evaluating situations that we're confronted from, confronted with and, and voting on.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Jensen?
So there's two issues here. There's the conversation about our trees. This town is conservationists and people that really worry about long-term sustainability. And they're actually two different conversations. People love our tree canopy. They love that we drive from Amerenac on the post road through Rye and then through Portchester and look around and go, oh, we don't have the urban sprawl that our neighbors have. We have done such a good job with protecting our trees, and people just love the way our town looks. But we also have a town of residents who spend a lot of money, who care deeply about their investments in their homes, who want to have a say in what can happen on their property. And so that kind of conversation was muddied, a conversation that was really important to have, was muddied by a procedural issue that happened on the council, that got ugly too quickly and should never have gotten ugly. And the shame in all of this is, we need to be talking about trees. We need to be talking about what people want their town to look like moving forward. And yet, for all of the reasons that all of us have been talking about in the papers, and I don't need to relitigate this here for you, we lost the conversation. I don't think there's much more to say, other than thank you to the city council people for making sure that when that tree law got passed, that we put in place a commitment to review it. Because no major ordinance should ever happen that has those kinds of constraints without an opportunity to review it. So it's important, again, that we hear your voices, and you tell us how you feel about your community and what you want it to look like in the future. And that's kind of basically the sum total.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Nathan?
So if anyone has finished watching everything on Netflix, you can go back and watch all city council meetings from this year, and you'll
28th, early voting. Election Day is November 7th. I don't get to be a poll worker. I know so many of your faces from being an election inspector, and I don't get to be one this year, but I hope you'll get out there and vote.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Okay, Mr. Nathan?
Well, thank you all for attending, and thanks, Roz Lar. I think I wouldn't know where I was if you weren't standing there with your grandson and the stop sign and the 30 seconds, and it's, it's, it's now become a charming part of my life. So thanks for doing that. Look, my, my priorities on the city council are, are, are good governance, responsible fiscal management. I've been doing that for you and Rye for 20 years. Flooding and comprehensive planning are a key priority. What I ask of you all is that you come out and vote. It's an odd election, three of us running for three seats, but four names on the ballot. So in addition to asking that you cast your vote for me, I'm going to ask that you cast your vote for Jamie, who's my running mate and who I, I was so excited when she said she would run for city council, and, and I was ecstatic when, when that nomination happened. I'm also going to ask that you cross party lines this year. Vote for all three of us and vote for my new friend, Keith Cunningham. We've had great conversations. He said to me when we first spoke, he said, you know, I hope we have the kind of friendship and professional relationship that you and Bill Henderson have developed. And I was done. I was like, yeah, if we can do that, Rye will be well served. Because Bill, who's in the audience here, has been a great partner on the council and a great public servant to all of you. And that's what you're going to get with the three of us. So please, come out and vote. We're all committed to listening to the community first and foremost, and to one another, and to all of our colleagues in the council. We will bring that spirit to the council, and it will happen. And '24 will be a good year for us. And don't waste your vote on Lori. I love her. She's been a great partner, but she's going to be in Paris. So let's, let's not have instability and, and all the disruption of special elections. Let's just have the three of us on the council, and we'll do a good job for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. That's it. We're wrapping this up. Thanks to Roz Lar and Alex Van der Wateren for doing such a great job today. Thank you so much. We have to thank the Osborne for hosting us. Thank you so much. What a great venue, and so nice to have all of you here. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. If you need more information, we have a thing on the League of Women Voters called vote411.org, and you can probably find it on the League website, or you can just go to vote411.org. It's not easy to be a candidate for public office, and we should thank these people for volunteering to help us all out. Okay? Thank you. Good night.
Folks that live round, down around the Y, those small little blocks right behind the Y, where they're having the same problem. I live on this street and I have no place to park. So as we're all sitting here wondering about the other questions, about downtown, and you can never find a spot, and you got to circle through the back and around the front, and you can never find a spot, especially if you're meeting a friend for lunch and it's annoying, we actually have to talk about the residents first. Because they really are, they really sometimes don't know what to do. So I'm open to all discussions about this. I do think that we should be able to think about improving our parking, talk about, folks would jump out of their seats and yell at me if I said, well, maybe we can create a design for RFP that asks for what a parky garage would look like downtown. But right now, I'm getting everyone upset just by saying it. But we have to have the conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Nathan, parking?
So, I mean, there's two parts to my response here. One is, I may have misheard, but it was the mayor, Josh Coen, and, and who, who had the idea, I believe, for creating the special parking permits in the area around the Y. believe, for creating the special parking permits in the area around the Y. I voted for it. I thought it was a good idea. I think it's a good thing for us to try out, and I think there may be other areas in Rye that are deserving of that kind of consideration. So I'm very open to that. It is a challenge for us, and it is something that Keith and Jamie and I spent a good part of today talking about, as we thought about, how do we use the issue of parking and some of the other space challenges we have to see if there's a way to solve a variety of problems. More parking means more places to put cars when there are storm events. Deck parking could be a way to create more field space for sports. This is the kind of thinking that would inform comprehensive planning, so would street parking ideas. So I think this is something that we should actually have some conversations about and think about in terms of our CapEx program and our comprehensive planning and design for Rye. Keith raised some good points about the impact of the development in Portchester and the increase in population over there, and the impact that's going to have on our downtown. I'll let him talk about that and get credit for that. Jamie made very good points about different ways to approach it and thinking about the different impacts on the different neighborhoods and what their needs need to be. So this is an area, it's a great question, and I wish we had ninety minutes to do a workshop on it, and maybe we will sometime in '24.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Cunningham?
Just to touch base back on the tree issue, I love trees. And I'm a guy from New Hampshire and grew up with a lot of trees all over, and nobody ever cut down trees until they fell over. It heartens, it just heartens me when you see a big, beautiful tree being cut down, and you take a look at the crosscut on it, and there's not a bit of rot on it, and it seemed like it was a perfectly safe tree and probably had another fifty years to its two-hundred-year life. It bothers me tremendously. That said, I think this, the original tree clearing issue was probably focused mainly on development and clear cutting of lots. I think the houses that are leading into Grace Church Street on Forest bothered me tremendously. There's beautiful landscaping that's been done there, and it'll be beautiful in thirty years from now. However, in the meantime, all the beautiful trees that were on those lots aren't there any longer. So I do think the tree law was very, very important. And as Josh mentioned, it was important to have in there a clause that it's going to be reviewed in fourteen months, so we'll see how things go there. As far as going back in the parking situation, I think it's tremendous what was done around Mead Place. When the YMCA was first built, or the addition was first built there, they allowed for a certain amount of parking, and that was supposed to be sufficient for the use of the Y. However, it, as it turns out, there's not enough parking there. So a lot of people have been parking on Mead, and those houses are constrained with the number of cars that they can have on their properties, because there's small lots with driveways for one car for the most part. So I think that was tremendous. As far as looking forward down the road, as far as where, if a parking garage could possibly be designed, that it wasn't highly obtrusive and destroy the character of Rye, that's something we can potentially look at. Over on the other side of the highway onto Highland and onto the Highland lots, that may be an area.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we've got some questions from the citizens out here, and we're going to start with you, Mr. Nathan. And this is from Paul Hicks, who's out there somewhere. What is the status of the master plan, and is it a priority?
So I'm going to interpret master plan and comprehensive planning for the purposes of the discussion tonight as all meaning the same thing, even though there are people who will make distinctions between the definitions, and I might even get them mixed up. But the basic idea is that we take a look at Rye and the planning around its zoning code and land use, and think about the future, the next fifty years. Our plan is from 1985, I believe, and hasn't been updated since then. So in terms of priority, I think it's come up in, by mention, in a council meeting or two recently this year. It hasn't been identified or agreed upon as a priority. There's probably some consensus developing around the idea that we should discuss it. I am certainly in favor of us developing some kind of practical planning process, because I think we have a lot of issues that need to be. Where looking at how different things integrate with other things is very important, just like we talked about parking and how it relates to flooding and field space and other kinds of use, and what is the impact of the urban development going on next door going to have on our city. All of these things are related. And when I talk to folks at the library and the Boat Basin Commission, and everyone on the council is assigned to different boards and commissions as a liaison, planning is a place where you can bring all of that input together, and it can inform just our strategic thinking on budget and code development. So I think it's an important thing to be made a priority, and I would love to see comprehensive planning really go forth in 2024.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nathan. Okay, Mr. Cunningham?
In doing some research, going back when I first announced my candidacy, master plans seem like a topic that came up continuously. Did searches on that through cities, information as well as through publications, and it just seems as though it's been a topic that's been considered critical and important at the beginning of each term of someone's election. And we still haven't gotten very far on it at all or anywhere on it. But giving credit back to the city council, many of the issues that would be encompassed in the master plan have been closely monitored and have been altered and changed and updated over time. So we may not have an all-inclusive master plan, and Josh can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but it seems as though a lot of the components of that master plan are addressed on a regular basis. So we could put this together, and putting together, my understanding is that we would be bringing in consultants to help us, guide us through, which could be quite costly. I think we would need to probably evaluate the costs, and if we really are, it is necessary for us to update it or not.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Jensen?
So the last time, and you both said this, the last time a master plan was actually written and presented to the community was 1985. And as I opened tonight, we talked quite a bit about how this town is so wonderfully managed and supported by the expertise of citizens, right? We've got the Planning Commission, the Board of Architectural Review, zoning, zoning appeals, tax assessment. These are all volunteers that then bring their best advice and expertise to our city Vast majority, though, of people in Rye don't understand how all these things and decisions get made. And when we're having extreme weather events, when new development projects are happening, when we're hearing about what's happening up at the State House in Albany, and we worry about urban sprawl, and we cry when the mature tree is cut down, or we're thinking about the new house that was built in place of the small house that had three bedrooms and now it's, now it has six bathrooms, and we worry about it, and we talk about it in an aesthetic way, we talk about it in a nostalgic way, and we get upset. None of that is a way to approach thoughtful planning for our future, for the people that want to move into this town after we move into this town. We have a responsibility, when we step and we volunteer, step up and we volunteer on these committees, to kind of be all on the same page, to kind of go, "Where are we heading? What do we think we want to do? Where are our priorities? And what's coming down the way?" And we are not providing our city staff with enough guidance despite their amazing expertise and despite the fact they're dealing with this. I'm just laughing with you, I'm going to get cut off in a minute, but, I don't know, it was four years ago, I was writing a Rye Record article, and I was in one of those planning workshops, and you know, there were paper on the walls, and everybody was writing up their stuff, and then nothing happened after that. But I wrote the article.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Okay, here's the next question from one of our citizens out here, Franz Nederker, which is right over there. I hope I got your name right. The second of the, and this is going to start off with you, Mr. Cunningham. "The second of two constitutional amendments on the ballot regarding sewer facilities cost is a renewal of a provision now in place that expires every ten years and was first authorized in 1963. It recognizes the importance of the cost of this particular infrastructure item and removes it from the municipality's constitutional debt cap. What is the candidate's view on this constitutional amendment?"
I hate to ask you to do this.
No, it's okay.
Could you repeat it again?
"The second of the two constitutional amendments regarding sewer facilities costs is a renewal of a provision now in place that expires every ten years and was first authorized in 1963. It recognizes the importance of the cost of this particular infrastructure item and removes it from the municipality's constitutional debt cap. What is the candidate's view on this constitutional amendment? Renewal of the provision now in place regarding sewer facilities costs."
I guess what this is stating, and I'm probably off-base on this, but that we would have the ability to, that we would have the ability to exceed the debt cap on an annual basis if it was pertaining to upgrading the sewers? Okay. Yeah, obviously, we've been going through, and that's been part of our capital spending each year, and I believe the city manager has a schedule that he's playing that out through. As far as exceeding the debt cap, that obviously is going to put a burden of increased taxes onto our residents. There's probably a, it's an interesting question for sure, and probably one of the most sophisticated questions that we've had in a few years. But it does put us in, would put us in a situation of being able to expedite the upgrading of sewers to make sure that we don't have accidents and critical issues that we have to address, and as well as obviously polluting. Each year, save the sound, or there's some organizations that test the water in each of the harbors, and Rye does squeak through majority of the time, but it would obviously probably produce less pollution into the sound by addressing this earlier.
Okay, thank you. You ready, Ms. Jensen?
I think this constitutional amendment is an important one to have on the ballot, just because it's getting us to sort of unpack some of these underlying questions, but it's pretty much, I'm just saying, vote yes. And I think you vote yes, and Josh, Nathan might know more, but I think you vote yes because, a little bit of what Keith said, we have a plan. Sometimes I say it's whack-a-mole, but we have a plan, and these kinds, and sewer infrastructure is one of the biggest costs that we face. And this is kind of a straight, that's why it gets renewed every year, this is why it's kind of a straightforward question. We don't want it to affect our tax cap, because it can be really costly, and it's something we have no choice but to deal with. And so for me, it's kind of a moment for us to stop and go, "Wow, this is actually kind of something we have to pay attention to." And yet, it's being renewed every ten years because we have to pay for this stuff. We can't just not take care of our sewers. And so to tie it up in conversations about a tax cap is not really a smart move for a local municipality. That's just my read. I'm hoping our councilperson over here is going to give us a more nuanced answer.
I don't know it'll be more nuanced.
How about it, Mr. Nathan?
I'm really impressed that both Jamie and Keith have dissected the entire topic.
Without law school, absolutely.
Very accurately. They did a great job, and I guess have had the benefit of maybe thinking about this a little bit. Well, first, in real simple terms, yes, you should vote yes for this. Sewers are an incredibly important part of our infrastructure, and they're one of the biggest challenges and problems we have right here in Rye. So it is important that we can address them. I think, given that it's the council that makes those budget allocations, in some regards, we have the ability to override our own cap, so I'm not sure, you know, if we as a community think this is important to do, we can do it anyway. What this really is, is it shows the lack of foresight at the state level when they impose these things, because they don't think through the implications of capping certain kinds of expenditures or capping things, and then they go later on, "Oh, yeah, pension and healthcare costs went up. Oh, well, well, you'll just have to wedge it in, and then your roads are lousy, or your sewers don't get fixed because you have this issue." And we in Rye are far too sophisticated a community to need Albany to tell us what to do. It's one of the reasons I love living here. So, yeah, vote yes. Jamie and Keith, you got it right. And that's really, I don't really have anything else to add to that. I did have something I wanted to bring up that I now have forgotten about, so it couldn't have been that important.
Okay, this is the final question, and this from Marion Preston. I'm sure you're out there somewhere, Marion. Okay. It's also about a constitutional amendment. "The first constitutional amendment on the ballot is a cap on capital expenditures for small-city school districts. The cap is no longer needed now that the voters can vote each year on their budget. What is your view on this amendment?" And that actually starts with you, Ms. Jensen.
Once again, I don't quite understand why our local residents are being asked this question, because we vote on our local school budgets. But yes, vote yes. I'm not going to waste anybody else's time on that. It's just kind of a straightforward answer. It's not really something that is going to directly affect Rye citizens. But once again, if our councilperson up here, former board member, wants to add nuance, please do, Mr. Nathan.
Well, I try to avoid commenting on whatever the schools may or may not want. I think, again, in a city like Rye, alleviating these tax cap pressures is important, because otherwise, we're just kind of causing ourselves harm, and we're smart enough to sort these things out ourself. But I'm going to use my time to talk about the thing that I now remembered I wanted to talk about before, which is we were talking about planning, and one of the things that's scary about planning is that you spend a lot of time, and this big, thick book gets produced after you're all done with it, and it goes on a shelf where it collects dust, and somebody uses it as a doorstop, and nothing happens. And that's a fair fear. And so when I was on the Board of Ed, we had that fear, because we had a strategic planning process, and we all were kind of looking at it with a jaundiced eye, saying, "I don't know that that's really what we want to do." So Jim Collier and I, Jim was the president and I was the vice president at the time, and I'd had some experience in my work, and he'd had some experience in his work. We got together and we redesigned the way we did planning, so that we were taking the best of these large, comprehensive, strategic planning processes, and really scaling it down to things that were actionable, that we could actually accomplish in the city of Rye or in our school district. And the payoff has been there, and I'll give you an example. It sort of has nothing to do with what we're talking about here, but it's nice and concrete. So we had, one of our, one of our ideas was that sports for every kid, multiple choices, and we added crew, and we added squash. That was because we had a strategic vision for kids getting into college with extracurriculars helping them. Well, today, the most valuable part of the college application for Rye kids that's making the biggest difference is their athletic participation, and that's something Eric Byrne told me the other day, and that's something that Jim Collier and I and the board back then, Dr. Schein and everyone, had made a strategic priority, and it's not buried in some book. We actually did it, and that's my idea of planning here, is things will actually do.
Thank you, Mr. Nathan. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cunningham? The constitutional amendment number one.
I say yes.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Okay, so now we're going to go to closing statements, and we're going to go in the way we picked the lot. So Mr. Cunningham, then Ms. Jensen, then Mr. Nathan. Okay? And whenever you're ready, Mr. Cunningham, your closing statement.
I want to thank you for, it was actually quite fun. I was a little bit leery what I was getting myself into tonight, but I enjoyed myself here. And I want to thank Jamie and Josh for their support and camaraderie. We've had some great conversations, and hopefully we'll have many more great conversations over the next couple of years as members of the city council. In my closing, again, just reflecting back on what my point was that I made in my opening, was that many people have observed the change in the way that business has been conducted in the city council recently. And I just want everybody to know that I'm going to do my best to do the best for residents of Rye, which is including engaging in civil discourse, listening to others, respecting and considering their views. There are no issues on the city council level that are partisan. I'm a Republican, sitting here with two Democrats, and we had a nice afternoon at Noble Pie, sitting in the back and looking at that beautiful parking lot behind the buildings in Rye. I'm convinced that any challenges that we face as a community can be solved if we just listen and trust each other and keep the best interests of the residents of Rye as our focus. I want to thank everybody that's watching at home and everybody that came out here for participating in this, and that I hope I get your vote on November 7th. And I'll be honored to serve you as a member of the Rye City Council.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jensen?
I had so much to say in my opening statement. I didn't get to properly thank all of you. So thank you, John, and the League of Women Voters for managing this evening's forum, and to all of you for your thoughtful questions and your attention. It really feels great to be in this room. The new chairs are beautiful. Spent many an evening. I'm usually on that side, in here. So I really thank you for welcoming us into your home. I'm also very pleased to be sitting up here with Josh, Nathan, and Keith Cunningham discussing what we think matters to our city. And I'm thinking you're all seeing there's a lot of shared focus and purpose and clarity. My work as a community leader with professional experience has given me a very strong sense of the pulse of this town. I'm everywhere, all the time. People tell me, Jamie, you're always there. Where were you? You're there. We see you all the time. I really want you to know, I've been in this place so many times. And I really am, I care about this community. If elected, you can be assured that I'll be listening to you, working to build a more transparent process for debating issues, and that the dollars we spend on capital and city services are making life better for all of us. We live at the bottom of a 14-mile watershed on the Long Island Sound. It is a beautiful place to live. It also comes with significant challenges. Can't walk away from them. Protecting life and property during extreme weather events and managing our capital investments for the long term matters more than ever. So I want to keep Rye the vibrant and welcoming city that we all love. So I hope you'll vote. November, October 28th, early voting. Election Day is November 7th. I don't get to be a poll worker. I know so many of your faces from being an election inspector, and I don't get to be one this year, but I hope you'll get out there and vote.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jensen. Okay, Mr. Nathan?
Well, thank you all for attending, and thanks, Roz Lar. I think I wouldn't know where I was if you weren't standing there with your grandson and the stop sign and the 30 seconds. And it's now become a charming part of my life. So thanks for doing that. Look, my priorities on the city council are good governance, responsible fiscal management. I've been doing that for you and Rye for 20 years. Flooding and comprehensive planning are a key priority. What I ask of you all is that you come out and vote. It's an odd election, three of us running for three seats, but four names on the ballot. So in addition to asking that you cast your vote for me, I'm going to ask that you cast your vote for Jamie, who's my running mate and who I was so excited when she said she would run for city council. And I was ecstatic when that nomination happened. I'm also going to ask that you cross party lines this year. Vote for all three of us and vote for my new friend, Keith Cunningham. We've had great conversations. He said to me when we first spoke, he said, you know, I hope we have the kind of friendship and professional relationship that you and Bill Henderson have developed. And I was done. I was like, yeah, if we can do that, Rye will be well-served. Because Bill, who's in the audience here, has been a great partner on the council and a great public servant to all of you. And that's what you're going to get with the three of us. So please, come out and vote. We're all committed to listening to the community first and foremost, and to one another, and to all of our colleagues in the council. We will bring that spirit to the council, and it will happen. And '24 will be a good year for us. And don't waste your vote on Lori. I love her. She's been a great partner, but she's going to be in Paris. So let's not have instability and all the disruption of special elections. Let's just have the three of us on the council, and we'll do a good job for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's it. We're wrapping this up. Thanks to Roz Lar and Alex Van der Wateren for doing such a great job today. Thank you so much. We have to thank the Osbornes for hosting us. Thank you so much. What a great venue, and so nice to have all of you here. Election Day is Tuesday, November 7th, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. If you need more information, we have a thing on the League of Women Voters called vote411.org. And you can probably find it on the League website, or you could just go to vote411.org. It's not easy to be a candidate for public office, and we should thank these people for volunteering to help us all out. Okay, thank you. Good night.